All right. Want to welcome everybody here this evening again. Quick reminder out there, I just want to remind everybody that next week is going to be the last day to sign up if you intend to testify. So you need to make sure you sign up by our meeting on Wednesday. If you're on that list, that doesn't mean you're going to get to go that evening, but you need to sign up. If you don't sign up, you've missed your opportunity. All right? I want to stress that. I want to be very clear about that. If you're not signed up, you need to get on the list. If not, you lose your opportunity. Okay. With that, first order of business we need to take care of, there's been, there's been some evidence submitted, the county didn't accept it in light of a witness coming to testify. The applicant has made a motion to remove that from evidence and we need to discuss and decide what the fate of that particular evidence is this evening. So with that, I guess I'll turn it over to the applicant. You can go ahead and fill us in and then we'll let Mr. Lukahan respond and we'll discuss it from there.
I was actually going to try and be unusually brief. So I'll just, I'll try and cut to the chase, Mr. Chairman. We filed a motion, obviously it relates to the Rand report, references to the Rand report. We now know, it's been confirmed, that Mr. Rand will not be testifying in this proceeding. And I don't know if it matters whether, I don't know if this matters or not, but it's not because he can't, it's because he won't. And his statement that's attached to Mr. Lukahan's response is, "Mr. Rand will not subject the board, the attending public, or myself to further time wasted." I won't get into the descriptions of what's going on in this proceeding, but the bottom line is, this is not an issue of whether or not the rules of evidence applies. That's one of the things that Mr. Lukahan said in his response. This has nothing to do with the rules of evidence. This has to do with our express due process rights as enunciated by the Illinois Supreme Court in the context of exactly this type of proceeding, to be able to cross-examine a witness. It's also specifically covered by the rules of this board. I quoted, "No less than authority than yourself when you were asked a question during one of the hearings about people submitting comment and not subjecting themselves to cross-examination." And you said they can't do that, they have to come in and be sworn. This is exactly that type of situation where Mr. Rand has submitted a report and he is, as I said, not just unable to come in, he is refusing to come in, to be sworn under oath and be cross-examined. That's contrary to the Illinois Supreme Court. It is contrary to the rules of this board as they've been enunciated a number of times. Mr. Lukahan's indicates that there have been a number of reports that have been introduced in this case, not by their law firms. The difference with that is, number one, they've been introduced by people who are experts in those fields and could qualify those documents. And I'll remind you that as late as this past Monday, just two days ago, you ruled that certain documents that I had asked Mr. Punch about would not be admitted into evidence because he denied any knowledge of them. So that is the way it's been handled in this proceeding from day one. This thing about the video from what seems months ago, because it is, all the way back to November 17th, the video that Mr. Parsak introduced in his presentation. The objection that Mr. Lukahan's made was not the objection that I'm making. It had nothing to do with it. The objection he made was, number one, that he wanted a copy of it, and number two, he said hearsay and lack of foundation. He didn't say anything about his right to cross-examine the people who were in that video. Had he done that, he could have moved to strike the video at that time. He never did that. Strike. So, thank you. Thank you, Phil. I appreciate that. So I think I've already said more than I said I was going to say. The bottom line is, this person is refusing to come in, to be sworn and be cross-examined. His report cannot be in the record of this proceeding. It's as simple as that. Thank you. Let's talk about why Mr. Rand has refused to come. He's refused to come for a number of reasons. One is, he's watched the cross-examination, which has been so above and beyond anything that I've ever seen in a zoning hearing, that it is ludicrous. People have come in here to testify, to tell this board what is going on, what their opinions are, instead spent two hours talking about bias that didn't exist, that this chairman said didn't exist, talking about ethical violations that were supposedly violations of the law, none of which were proven. They were submitted to cross-examination that was just absolutely crazy. Second, Mr. Rand was threatened if you came here to testify, as was Mr. McCann. Mr. McCann was here with police officers here because of those threats. Mr. Rand has said he has a fear for his health. That's why he's not here. You can take out one part of that statement and point it to it, but it's really the last thing he says. Let's talk about the right to cross-examination. Clarence says you have a right to cross-examine under certain circumstances because you have a property right. I'll be honest, I didn't put this in my motion, but I don't know what an advantage his property right is. Every witness who came in here and said that they had one of these pieces of property that was asked to be zoned, he said he didn't represent them. I assumed he did until Monday night. He said he doesn't represent the property owners, he represents advantage. That's a different right. It's not the property right that Clarence and the Supreme Court base the right to cross-examine. Advantage does not have a property right. They have a contract right, they don't have a property right. I have not seen, which I normally do, and maybe it's here and I missed it, the authority given to Mr. Blazer and his law firm to represent the property owners. Every other time I've been involved in a zoning case where someone is a property owner and they have a contract with the company that's buying the property, they have to provide Mr. Blazer the right to, the authority to represent them. That hasn't occurred here. We talk about the video. I made two objections that first night to see what the rules were. One foundation, two hearsay. The exception to hearsay is, I'm an expert and I can rely on other people's reports. That's why it's relevant. That's the hearsay exception that allows you to get, get reports in from other experts. It's still hearsay, but there's an exception to it. We'll rule my hearsay exception because hearsay wasn't applying to this. That's the only way he gets these reports in, is because he has an exclusion to the hearsay rule. We want to talk about due process. It's a flexible concept. The Supreme Court says that. Requires only such protegeal protections as fundamental principles of justice in a particular situation demanded. Does anybody think that advantage has not been given the right to cross-examine, raise these issues? We've spent nights and nights cross-examining people on things that had no relevance to this procedure, this proceeding. To say now that, you know, that cross-examination, those threats are going to be rewarded, should not occur. And to say that they shouldn't occur and not allow it is a violation of my client's procedural due process right, which they have because they are surrounding property owners. They're not contract rights, they are surrounding property owners. Thank you. Two final comments, if I may, Mr. Chairman, in just two. Number one, the Clarence decision, which we cited in our, in our motion, the Supreme Court decision, does not limit itself to simply people who have a property right. It is, for the benefit of all parties who are interested in that, frankly, would include everybody in this audience. But the penultimate ruling, which we quoted in our motion from the Clarence decision is, "While an interested party's right of cross-examination may be tailored by guidelines such as these, that right may not be wholly contravened by the procedures used in the joint hearing issued here." And the issue in that case, if, oh, I know Mr. Blazer and Mr. Krieger are going with it, but, the issue was that the right to cross-examine had been completely curtailed. So that's what's happening here with this hearing. I can't comment on this stuff about being threatened. You know, a lot of people in this, in this proceeding, a lot of people in this audience disagree with each other, but whether they're for or against this, this project, I find it impossible to believe that any of the people in this community would have threatened a witness. So, you know, those claims are unsubstantiated. It's Mr. McCann saying, "Somebody threatened me." It's Mr. Rand then saying, "Mr. McCann was threatened and now I'm afraid." But Mr. Rand's penultimate conclusion, which is in this unverified letter that he attaches to Mr. Lukahan's response, is that he will not subject the board, the attending public, or myself to further time wasted. He will not come in and be sworn and be subject to cross-examining. And that is a violation of our due process rights, it's a violation of the Supreme Court case, it's a violation of the rules of this proceeding, and, Mr. Chairman, it's a violation of what you said during this hearing. The witness must appear and be sworn, subject to cross-examination. All those things that every other witness is subject to. That, that comment by you was in response to the question, "Can someone just submit written comment?" And you said no. And that's exactly what's happening here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may make one statement. Again, it's a quote from the case of Clarence. And the Clarence case says, and this is how it gets to the issue of cross-examination, quote, "As a result, those parties must be afforded the due process rights normally granted to individuals whose property rights are at stake." I still haven't heard that Mr. Blazer represents anybody who has a property right. Thank you.
All right. I guess given this, I want a little bit of the rest of the moment of the board, for your input on this, with regard to this motion either way. Do you guys have any feelings about it? Do you feel it's, it shouldn't be allowed, it shouldn't be allowed? I guess, what are your thoughts on it? Do you have anything, Joan or Rich, do you have anything? The question was, Joan had a question to our counsel. Did, did, did Mr. Blaken review the case? And your response today is?
I don't think the same way that Mr. Lukahan does. I guess I'm, I'm looking at another side of the decision process. I mean, they're talking about the process. I'm looking more at the hearing proceedings.
Tom, they can't hear you.
I'm sorry. And I'm looking more at the hearing proceedings required by the media.
Okay. I guess my, at this point, my thoughts and feelings, and I'll just throw this out there to you guys. We have set up the process and we have tried to uphold the process throughout. I guess at this point, we need to continue to uphold the process that we've set forth and, and the statements were made, and I have made those, that someone must come in and testify in order to have the evidence submitted or taken into record. I guess my feeling is that we should continue to follow that. Are you guys, are you guys comfortable with that? Okay, all right. So, having said that, on the basis of the inability of Mr. Rand, the inability of Rand to come to testify on the report that is very specific to the Pleasant Ridge wind farmer, I will make a motion, no, I will not make a motion. I will, I will accept the applicant's motion to have this particular report struck from the record. With that, there are a few other factors that must take place. There was some testimony with regard to that. We're going to need to remove that from the record. I believe Kelson, Mrs. Kelson testified to that along with, was there a reference in a bell testimony as well? Okay. So we're going to need to make sure that those, those are correctly redacted to, to take that information that was presented out of there.
Mr. Chairman, I would not, I would ask that they not be redacted. The motion to strike is, I assume it's granted, but to redact them, I think at this point would not be proper. If, I think the board is smart enough to understand that they can't take those into consideration, but I would like those to stay in the record as an offer of proof. My, just for the record, and it's in my motion, the Kelson testimony, that's the subject for this, is from February, the February 9th hearing. It's pages 1901, line 13, to 1905, line 24. We don't have the transcript yet from Mrs. Bell, so I suppose we can, we can address that once we have that transcript. That was, I think from last week or two weeks ago, if memory serves. My suggestion would be, and I don't know if Mr. Lukahan says in charge of doing it that way, I, I do think it should be removed from the record, but since we do have the pages and line numbers, I would recommend that Mr. Lukahan simply, one of the things that lawyers can do when a situation like this arises is you make what's called an offer of proof. You folks can't rely on that, but at least that way he preserves his record for purposes of any subsequent appeal. So it's actually in the record, but not something that you can rely on. So my recommendation would be that he simply carve those sections out of the transcript, tender them as a UCLC exhibit as an offer of proof.
All right. Gentlemen, in this situation, an offer of proof will not be allowed. There is no, there is no eligibility for an offer of proof because Mr. Rand is refusing to testify. So we're not denying him the opportunity to testify. As a matter of fact, we would appreciate him coming and testifying. The offer of proof is made in lieu of a denial of our inability to allow him to testify. We have it done now. Mr. Rand is welcome and he continues to be welcome. So, offer of proof, we will redact the transcripts to not have the testimony that was presented in regards to Rand exhibit in evidence. It's over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Let the records indicate that exhibit 100, Pleasant Ridge exhibit 100, is not admitted into evidence.
UCLC.
I'm, I'm sorry. UCLC exhibit 100 is not admitted into evidence.
But it is in the record, correct? Thank you.
It is, it is in the record. UCLC exhibit 100 is in the record, but it's not in evidence. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and continue on.
If I may ask for clarification, Mr. Chairman, I frankly don't know what that distinction is. If it's stricken, it's not in the record. How are we going to argue, how are you going to show anybody afterwards what we're arguing about if it's not there for someone to look at when the thing goes on?
I'm just saying, we have not admitted the evidence, so it does not, it's not a consideration for this board to utilize in this process. It still is within the record because it was submitted and if there ever is a question of why we struck it or whatever the case is, it still exists there. All right. First witness this evening, Brent Johnston.
Good evening. My name is Brent Johnston, and I'm not from this community. I want to go on record by saying I'm here for the kids and the students in youth schools. My background is, I'm a long-term retired teacher now. I taught in a dozen suburbs for many years, about 34 years, and during that time, I had a lot of dealings with parents and students and community and, and I thought tonight I would come down and give you a little bit of perspective. I know this is a very conflicting thing that you are going through. Some of my background also includes some very small communities, newer Illinois and plain, all of my, not too far from here is where my parents grew up. So I'm very familiar with local schools and local communities. The two things that stand out in my mind is, everything, everything in these communities, at least from what I understand, surrounds themselves between two things, the church and school. And I hope after the dust settles on this entire proceeding, that we fully understand in this room that the community is still going to go on. And one thing I've asked from both sides of the community as an outsider, is that you still share your good thoughts together and that you do what is best for the kids and the community and each other, because that's not going to go away after the decision is made by this, by this panel. What I intend to do today is give you some insight, a little different than anyone you're used to. My background is a very strong background in legislative materials and legislation, in particular driver education. Yes, I'm that guy that got in with some teenagers for 34 years and taught driver's ed to a lot of different kids. I certainly wish I had been in your community because most kids know how to drive at around nine or 10 years old behind a farm. So I wish I could have taken advantage of that a little bit more. But I was in a very congested area and the importance of education bar none is so important to me that I thought I'd spend a few moments here tonight with you and let you know what's going to happen maybe in the next couple of years. My focus tonight is going to be continuously channeled towards what's best for the kids and what's best for the students. And my central theme tonight will be that. I entitled this conversation that we're going to have tonight, there's a storm coming from the state that nobody in the state has ever seen before. And it's going to be a storm that's going to hit small rural consolidated districts like you have here in this area beyond belief. The dynamics of school funding and parents, administrators, and teachers, and especially the students, you're going to see the dynamics of this downturn of financial instability from our state, probably for the next three to five years. I'm expecting a three to five percent drop in state funding across the board for all general state aid and likely more than that if you include what is known as categorical aid. Categorical aid would be aid that is given to like special ed or driver's ed or special categories. As a parent, now as a, and as a teacher, and then as a person with a great background in legislative concepts, I think that I have a good feel as to what the pulse is going to be in the next few years coming from the state. I work a lot with state agencies and state legislators regarding funding. How school administrators will balance their, their revenue and their budgets with a lack of this revenue is going to be a very difficult thing to predict. It's rather simple, really. A school district either has sufficient revenue coming into their various funds or it doesn't. This is based primarily on two separate revenue sources. Property tax that we all know about, that's on tax, tax, property taxes on businesses and properties. And then the second form of revenue is from general state aid, that being general state aid or categorical aid. Unfortunately, all of these sources of revenue can vary very widely from year to year based on, for example, how many property owners enter or leave a community, or how much the state of Illinois is in trouble in regards to their state funding. The state reduces state aid in order to balance the state of Illinois budget. We all know that. The problem is, and this gives me no resolve, that to tell you tonight, that the state of Illinois regarding state funding for schools is 49 out of 50 states. We are near dead lights. And everybody in this room, I'm sure understands how bad the state's financial crisis is down state, and I don't, I think we're going to jump to 50 here very shortly. As if the first storm is not bad enough, a second storm is going to be ongoing or rapidly approaching. As most of you know, there's a pension crisis in the state. That is second to none. We're probably, we probably have the worst funding of pensions, state pensions in the nation. Very soon, the Illinois State Supreme Court is going to make decisions on the constitutionality of the pension reform bill that was passed by the Illinois Legislature last year. It is of my opinion that the State Supreme Court will find this reform bill unconstitutional. When that happens, the Illinois General Assembly will have to rewrite the pension reform bill so that it can pass judicial scrutiny. It is also of my opinion, and the opinion of many other legal experts, that in order to get the pension so-called white elephant off the state legislature's back, that the General Assembly will place this Ferguson pension on the backs of the local school districts. This is what is known as, and commonly known as, the pension shift. Basically, the state of Illinois is going to dump this pension mess on the local school districts. And that is going to be very disheartening, especially for smaller school districts. Based on your published Prairie Central Illinois State Board的记忆调查报告that I looked up online, your school district currently spends approximately $6,177 per student. And that's just on instructional spending, which is primarily teacher salaries and administrative salaries. Multiplying that number by the total number of students in your school, which is 2,144 reported on that same report card, we find that the approximate cost of salaries on instructional spending is right around $13,243 and almost $500. Assuming that the pension shift does occur, and the indication that I'm getting from my inside sources is, this is a very... to get the pension so-called white elephant off the state legislature's back, that the General Assembly will place this burdensome pension on the backs of the local school districts. This is what is known as, and commonly known as, the pension shift. Basically, the state of Illinois is going to dump this pension mess on the local school districts. And that is going to be very discouraging, especially for smaller school districts. Based on your published Prairie Central Illinois State Board of Education report card that I looked up online, your school district currently spends approximately six thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars per student. And that's just on instructional spending, which is primarily teacher salaries and administrative salaries. Multiplying that number by the total number of students in your school, which is two thousand one hundred forty-four reported on that same report card, we find that the approximate cost of salaries on instructional spending is right around thirteen thousand two hundred forty-three dollars and almost five hundred dollars. Assuming that the pension shift does occur and the indication that I'm getting from my inside sources is this is a very real possibility, school districts, local school districts like Prairie Central will now have to pay both the portion of the pension that they currently are doing as well as what the state is going to dump on them. Depending on how that all flushes out, that could be in the amount of anywhere from two to five percent that the state now is currently paying. The idea here is the state wants to get rid of the pension mess and put it away from them so they didn't do things with our money other than do what we're supposed to do with it. The pension shift amount from the state would have a negative impact on your school district, and this is something that sometimes we don't consider. Not just what's going on today, but more than that is what's going to go on in the future? What does the future have for this district and for the community and the kids? If the state takes a pension shift of two percent, that equals right around two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars a year. That's going to have to come out of property tax, business tax, that type of thing. You're not going to get any more money from the state, they're going to take more money from you to run your school. If it's a three percent increase, we're at three ninety-seven, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, a four percent pension shift would be almost five hundred thirty thousand dollars. And a five percent increase would be six hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. We're not talking about pocket change here, this is, this is a major, major dent, major schools budget. The numbers above are only approximations, but please note that this will not be just for one or two years, this is forever. You're going to have that tax burden on paying for the pensions forever. Larger school districts like where I come from, even though they will have the same pension shift problems that you guys are having, they have a better means of being able to afford it because they have more taxing entities, they have more properties that they can tax and collect more money that way. It may take smaller rural consolidated districts like you have here in this part of the state, anywhere from ten to fifteen years to recover from such a drastic, you know, when you combine both of those things, the pension shift, which could be two or three percent along with the drop in state aid, we're talking about anywhere from four to six or seven percent decrease in revenue for your school, which as I understand is already having some financial concerns. Simply stated, if you can't, if you're having problems now, if your school district is having financial problems now, the future, and what I'm saying is within the next one or two years, it's even going to be worse. We are talking about massive demand. When you think, how do we balance, the same way you can balance your own chef's corner everyone, you know, if I don't have enough money coming in, I've got to start cutting things. Okay? The only way you can really cut something in a city district that makes the most sense because it's the highest payout, we're talking about massive teacher layoffs, huge increases in class sizes. If you drop teachers who stuff the same number of kids, you're going to have to raise the class sizes. These are things that we have to kind of expect. Teachers are probably going, you're going to have to cut salaries or starting salaries or at least keep them at the same spot. And what will happen is teachers that would normally come to this area to teach may find it more prosperous to go elsewhere. You can no longer count or trust what's coming from Springfield. I will not count on any extra funding from Springfield for quite a while. Governor Warner has gone publicly and stated several times, he has a huge initiative to consolidate school districts across the state, not only in this area, but also up north where I live. Another initiative is to close neighborhood schools, you know, and eventually if you consolidate a school, you know, and you take the kid, you've got to bus them somewhere, you can't just tell the kid you have no place to go, so there's going to be more busing of students, things like that. As school districts consolidate, school boundaries will need to be changed. Students who have been lifelong friends and may now be separated and go to an entirely different high school depending on where they happen to live. Kids who do things regularly together at church and who would normally go to the same school may not necessarily go to the same school if things get consolidated. Busing will likely take longer for kids, that's a concern that I would have, and especially for student athletes, we have concern that they might lose some of their connection with their own neighborhood high school if they are no longer going there. When schools consolidate, many students and parents are affected with longer travel times as well. A yearly drop of two or three percent in state aid for the next three to four years before it bottoms off, maybe in the fifth year, we're also seeing a very, kind of a disappointing feature in our state universities. We've already seen, maybe it's because of all the turmoil going on with the pension system, but we're already seeing at ISU, Eastern, Southern, Illinois to a lesser degree, about an eighteen to twenty percent drop in teacher candidate, degree-seeking candidates. That's quite significant when you start playing that out into the future. We're losing fifteen to twenty percent of kids going into the teaching profession. That's going to make it very difficult to find how they qualify teachers for smaller school districts in particular. In order to balance the budget then, with declining revenues, school administrators and school boards will have to face some very hard choices. Depending on what happens, there's only a couple of ways you can, you can get revenue. Either you have to increase the tax levy, okay? The problem is sometimes the tax levy is already camped out. If that's the case, you have to hold a referendum to increase the tax levy in order to get more income coming in. The other way that a school district can do new building and things like that is to hold a referendum for that where people, such and such folks can pull in as to whether or not they want to increase their taxes. I guess my, my biggest concern here is this. The state has dropped the ball on state funding. They have done so for the last ten years and it continues. If we as parents, and I don't care what side of the aisle you guys are on, we've got to take care of the kids. Your property value, at least in my area, insurance similar here, your property value and how you attract new, new neighbors into the area is largely due to the existence and the quality of the schools. And if we let the schools drop to a point where nobody wants to move into this area with kids, that's going to be very problematic. Not only for those that want to come in and be a neighbor of yours, but also for those individuals that would like to sell their place and move to Florida or go elsewhere. In order to comprehend the overall effectiveness, a school administrator is going to be looking at certain items in order to, if we don't get state funding, the wind turbine farm issue does not maybe go the way some industry would like it to go. And we cannot increase taxes, where do you want school administrators to make the cuts? You can't just say in this room, we don't want whatever, whether it's wind turbine technology or something else. You can't just say we don't want that. If you don't want that, that's great, that's fine, but please tell this floor or other people in the room, how do you plan to make up the difference? We can't just say we don't want it, but how do you make up the distance in tax money or creative financing? Several years ago, when I was coaching football, I always liked telling the story, so hopefully you'll get a chuckle. Parents, we would always have Monday night football. I don't know if you have that in this community, whether you have football or whatever, but we would always have Monday night films with the parents. And I would, I'd always get questioned by, usually by dad and say, hey, coach, you know, why didn't you run this play? Why didn't you do this play? If only you had done this play, you might have won the game. And early on, I kind of took that as kind of offensive to that, but it actually molded me into the coach that I became later on in my tenure at Hill Central. It taught me something, you know? The tiny guy coach is during the game. Anybody can coach the Monday, the Monday after and say, wouldn't put a shouldn't. The analogy here is quite simple. The game on wind turbine technology and wind farms is now. You're in the game now, you're coaching in the game now. What I hope nobody does in this room is become the Monday night coach and a year from now and say, if only we had, we would not be in the situation that we are today. So whatever the decision is made by this floor, again, I'm just an outsider giving some thoughts that you might not have thought about, and I appreciate very much your attentiveness and maybe someday, I do love small towns, it's a different world out here, and I guess the thing I like most about these small communities is everybody knows, I guess that's not true sometimes too, everybody knows everybody, but the most important thing, everybody takes care of everybody. That's, that's what's so special about communities like this. We don't have that as much up in the world. So after this is all over, I ask you one thing, regardless of your feeling, continue taking care of yourselves, each other, you're going to be going to church and outings together when this is all over, you're still friends and you're still neighbors. Thank you very much.
Someone has a question.
Right. One thing, well, you gave us your address. You gave your name and address and you didn't name, but you didn't do a dress.
I'm sorry. Again, Brent, B-R-A-N-T, Johnston, J-O-H-N-S-T-O-N, two four five east, the name of the street is south, S-L-U-T-H, Street Allen Hurst, Illinois.
Thank you, okay. Do we have questions at this point?
Yes.
You mentioned you were a driver's ed teacher.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you in any part of the administration of your school district?
I am not, no, I was not an administrator, I was the driver's ed coordinator, which is not an administrator, but a coordinator is an active teacher that oversees the driver education department.
So did you have other teachers that helped with it? Were you responsible for the department?
We worked together collegially, okay? I basically ran the behind the scenes thing, I would schedule kids for the primary meeting, make sure that classroom materials were available, films, things like that.
Were you, have you ever had a school board member?
I have not.
And you said you were at Hinsdale Central?
Hinsdale Central High School, Hinsdale, Illinois, it's in the western suburbs of Chicago.
I'm not going with that. What's your familiar area, you work in Plano then?
I'm sorry?
You mentioned Newark and Plano, what's your familiar area to go to small town?
Newark is where my dad grew up and my grandparents lived there on my dad's side, and Plano is where my mother's father and mother lived. I still have relatives in both areas, in particular Sandwich, Big Rock and Plano.
So you weren't, you weren't, you haven't any idea of those school districts?
No, no, the only words that I made to them basically is to give you a little background that, you know, my, some of my roots come from a small, a small town.
You also mentioned that in your, in the suburban area, you have a lot of tax-based school programs?
Yes.
Has there been reaction there when businesses or human residents are asked for tax increases? Or do they just readily give that and agree to give that fund to school districts?
Just like many, the one area that I guess unfortunately that we can have citizens kind of vote against seems to have to do with schools and property taxes is the one we, sales tax, income tax, we really don't have control over that. We, we still run into the same exact problems with having high taxes, high, you know, we have, we have higher salaries for the teachers, higher expenses, you know? So I think it's somewhat relative, yes, we have higher salaries for people, more expensive homes, things like that, but it's still relative. And we still, schools, schools and school administrators fight that, that tax levy issue all the time. The difference between the bigger districts and the smaller districts like you have from here is you rely a lot more on state aid, more so than maybe a larger school district. And because of the problems the state is having right now, I personally am anticipating a, a moratorium or a drop in those, in those funds. The state funding, you need state funding in a small school to survive. If that starts to go stagnant or worse yet, go down and as they start shifting even more tax burden onto your community, it's going to hit you guys hard.
Yeah, you seem like your main interest with pensions are going to be impacting for retired teachers and administrators.
That's correct.
That's going to fall down on the school districts. They're going to try to do that.
They're going to try to do that, the school administrators and the school management lobbyists will fight that too, and they'll consult with teacher, you know, that should not be your burden, you know, the General Assembly is going to drop the ball on this pension thing, not, not local communities and local taxpayers.
Any units of government or school district have any questions for Mr. Johnston? All right, applicant, yes sir, just, just a few, Mr. Johnston. First, a clarification, you were talking about the combined budget for teachers and staff, it was something like roughly six thousand dollars per student.
Six thou, from, from the reporter on the website, the internet website that I saw, that was the instructional, there's an operating budget and an instructional budget, that's the number I got off the internet. I'm hoping it's correct, certainly I am not infallible here, I'm not an accountant, but you know, we can certainly, you know, make, I guess the point I'm making here is, is if we're going to drop three, if we're going to add three or four percent of pension shift, whatever that salary is, you know, the total salary, whatever that number is, at the bottom line, I beg your forgiveness, but that's, that's what's going to be hit by the pension shift.
What website did you go to?
The Prairie Central C U S D eight website. And that was under the Illinois State Board of Education report card that was listed on the, on the internet.
And you had said roughly $6,000 per student times roughly 2,200 kids. And I think you spoke, as I heard, I did the math on my phone. You had said $15,000 something.
I think it's $15 million, yeah.
Number two, three or four, I lost count. You seem to have some insight into the legislative pension process in Springfield. Do you have some other role that you're in that gives you some insight into what's going on in Springfield?
Beyond the fact that it affects my own pension, this is what I have heard from legal entities associated with the previous union that I was associated with, IEA and IFT. But there's nothing, I mean, we're just maybe conjuring and making some thoughts as to where this is going to go. It may not, yet everything I keep hearing, there's going to be a portion of what the state pays right now towards the pension, which they haven't paid for the last 30 years, which is why we're in the problem that we're in. A portion of that, they want to shift over to the local school district so they don't have to bite off this whole pension crisis themselves. That's how they plan to fix it.
Are you familiar with something called the Illinois High School and College Driver Education Association?
That is my professional association that I belong to. I probably shouldn't say note of that as you're getting on my speech. I am the co-chair of the legislative task force for the Illinois High School and College Driver Education Association. That is a professional organization that primarily oversees how driver education is taught in public schools. And we have nearly 800 members, professional teachers in that association.
And then one last sub that you had handed out this document?
Yes, I forgot to mention that. I don't know if it's to any purpose. I did hand out to all the committee people, a handout that I found on the internet. Very strong similarities to what I believe is going on here. And it was an article that talked about how much money came into the local, you know, it's not just school districts that will be having advantage. It's going to be local villages, communities, you know, public works, things like that. So there's other areas that this is going to help besides school.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
This is really an interesting question.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for your service of teachers, I don't have enough of teachers and our pensions as well. But let me ask this question. Sure, the district that you retired from was a Hinsdale school district?
Correct.
And you would agree with you that either Hinsdale or Allenhurst are anything like Livingston County, correct?
That is correct.
They are both the suburbs of Hinsdale, is probably the wealthiest suburb of DuPage County, correct? Maybe for Ridge?
St. Mary, yes, I would say very highly wealthy, yes.
Yes, and Allenhurst would be just slightly under that as far as per capita, correct?
I would say well, you know, I'd put it in the top five, I would say.
And DuPage is in the top two per capita as far as property values in the state of Illinois, correct?
I wouldn't know.
Okay. Well, let me ask this question. What inside sources did you talk to that told you that the legislature and the governor have agreed or will agree to reduce school taxes or school support?
We've seen that the last couple of years, I believe. In particular, I vouch for the fact that in 2013, there was a huge drop in the amount of about $2-3 million that was dropped from the driver ed fund.
Okay, but my question is, who have you spoke to that says that 2015, the governor and the legislature are going to agree to either one, put the pension crisis on the local government bodies, or two, reduce education funding?
I never said that I spoke to anybody, okay? What I'm telling everybody in this room is that this is one of the possibilities that could.
One of the possibilities, you're absolutely correct. One of many, many possibilities. And you're not, you have a state legislature, correct?
Correct.
You have a state staffer, correct?
That's correct.
You're not a state lobbyist, correct?
That's correct.
You're not a Illinois Senate Republican attorney like I am, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any idea whether the school districts or the citizens in this area would support a school tax increase via referendum? Any idea?
That the people in this room would approve?
No, the people who live in the school districts that we're talking about would not support a school tax referendum rather than see wind turbines.
No, and the point I made, sir, was not whether or not they would or would not support such a referendum. But what I indicated to them is that's a very strong possibility of what's going to have to happen in the event that revenues do go down. I have no knowledge or no control as to whether or not state funding is going to go down. I'm basing this on pure logic.
So you have no idea whether state funding for schools is going to go down, correct? That's what you just said?
I have no personal knowledge legitimately that I can stand up here and say that school funding will go down. But I will say this, the likelihood of it happening logically says, yes, it's going to because the state has to balance their budget. And the only way they can do that is by making broad removal of many of their programs. Already Governor Ron has put a moratorium, a moratorium on new capital expenditures for public works.
Correct. Do you know who the state budget director is for Governor Ronner?
I do not.
Okay. So you wouldn't know that it's ten million? Let me ask this question next. We don't know what's going to happen because today Governor Ronner, Senator Colleton, and Speaker Manon have not agreed on what's going to happen, correct?
In regards to?
School funding.
As far as I know, nothing has been indicated for school funding between the leaders of the general sense that's correct.
Correct. And in past years, when the concept of reducing or putting the burden or pensions on the local governments, including the school districts, President Colleton, or I should say, that has been killed by the leaders of the legislation, correct? It has never actually gone to a vote.
In the past, that's correct.
And there's no coming this year to your word, correct?
And like you and myself, neither one of us knows if that's going to also hold true for this year. The legislative session is still in session.
We don't know, that's the point. Your just conjecture, I think, is what you said.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. You said you believe the Supreme Court will strike down the Pension Reform Bill. Are you a constitutional law attorney?
No.
Okay.
If you recall, my statement was, it is on my opinion.
Okay, now I'm just trying to understand what the basis of your opinion is and whether it's your constitutional law attorney, that's all.
Okay.
The fact that school funding may go down is an issue in your opinion that if it did go down, it's not just something that the residents in the school districts of Livingston County would have to deal with. It's the exact same thing that the residents of the York Township School District, the York School District, the Wheaton Community School District, two hundred of all the school districts in Chicago, they all would have that same concern, correct?
That's correct.
And I assume we're not putting any wind turbines up in Allenhurst, correct?
There's one in the children park, but not in Allenhurst.
Okay. But there's no wind farms where 136 wind turbines are going up in Allenhurst, correct?
That's correct.
And I can promise you, they're ahead of us in leading either. We all would agree with what we got that Ronner, you spoke of, Governor Ronner has suggested, we would all agree that he has no power to enact those reductions in school funding without the legislature also voting for those, correct?
Correct.
And the Black Caucus in the Senate today has gone crazy every time the topic of reducing school funding has occurred, correct?
I don't have particular knowledge. I have seen different articles or heard different news reports that they would certainly be upset with the lack of school funding for Chicago, but that's what you're indicating.
As would the Senate Republicans as it relates to, and the House Republicans as it relates to the suburbs of downstate, correct?
I don't know really what the state senators are thinking these days.
Okay, but there are the people who have to go down and reduce.
The state legislature has to, they're faced with two things, sir. One is the out of control spending that Springfield has been seeing doing has to stop somewhere. So maybe we have, yes, in the past, nothing has happened, but that doesn't mean something in the near future is not going to have to happen.
And we don't know that something will or will not happen, correct? I mean, we've gone from a budget deficit of zero to a budget deficit of $16 billion. Is there anything that tells you they're not going to go to a budget deficit of $18 billion?
Well, I hope we're like the federal government, but.
You hope, you're right.
Yeah.
And one of the strongest unions, one of the strongest lobbyists in the state is the Illinois Teachers Union, correct?
I don't know. I would assume they're one of the more vocal groups down there, yes.
And I think, just to make sure, you said this was something, these ideas were things that you that were quote conjuring, correct?
I would not use the word conjuring.
I think you did.
We'll find out if I'm conjuring, sir, in about another year or two when some of the things I said tonight, I believe very strongly, will come true. We'll find that out.
I think we know more than the Republican attorney from the Illinois Senate. Thank you. All right. Anybody in the audience have questions for Mr. Johnson? Anybody have questions? We got two out here. Mr. Schley, come on up. You got some more questions for him, sir?
No, I have a little.
No, he is fine.
Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm John. So. So do you understand why people here don't want to live here?
Yes, I know. I, that's not, I know this is going to sound selfish, okay? That's, I would like to know, okay? But my concern is that the kids are taken care of with enough funding. However you guys decide to do that is pretty good. Please share.
Basically, they're worried about property values and the noise and turbulence that people live in their houses, people moving out, especially in those. Okay, so you have a question, I mean, questions, okay, questions, sorry. Okay, let's just say, like, citizens have this long concerns, okay? Do you know the Prairie Central budget, what amount of money is going to be generated?
It's several hundred thousand dollars. I didn't really memorize that. You know, I have some, you know, I have some articles from that I gave to the chairperson that has what other communities have seen. I think the thing that I would say would be more, that I would like to research a little bit more, would be after a wind farm does go up, you know, what have been the outcomes?
Should save my testimony and point some of that out. So I guess, can I tell them what the present budget is, or is that a testimony?
No.
Questions? Okay, I only have one or two more questions. Listen, so basically, you have a crystal ball, you're saying, and the future belief of school finances, you guys are going to need and want this wind money. That's your crystal ball. We have a crystal ball, I have a crystal ball that says there's a lot of turbines that are around, a lot of houses, people live in quiet country that like it, and then the generations. If this comes to cause some of them to have to move, it's causing them to not sleep at night. You have a question, remember? Yes, so my question is, you have a crystal ball, make me one prediction, that we need the money because the state might have problems in the future. I have another prediction saying that people here will defect later because of the turbine. So which would you give more credence to, the money or the people living here?
I don't live here, and I don't think I should give a response to, I'm not going to tell you what to do. This is your community. I'm just trying to highlight some of my thoughts that I believe very strong. I wouldn't be here, I wouldn't have driven an hour and a half, two hours down here to share some of my thoughts with you. I'm not in this community, you guys are. You guys need to decide what to do in regards to wind turbine farms, et cetera. If not wind turbine farm revenue, I guess I'm an alarmist a little bit, then where is that other money going to come from? And anticipate the need for the possibility of a tax money increase or the possibility of a referendum. That's pretty much what I'm saying here.
Which leads to my next question, which is, what brought you here? Do you read very little and you got all your ass meetings?
I have a local friend here that, I was at his place of business, and he knew I was a teacher and we started talking. And I volunteered my time to come down here and talk not about my knowledge about turbine technology, but my knowledge about what I think is going to happen across the state in regards to finances. And the attorney over here probably would disagree with me in regards to some of that, but we will see who's right in the bottom near or to.
Thank you. Any other questions in the audience?
Yes, sir.
If, going back to the children we're talking about, if you knew that children would be physically negatively affected by the wind turbines, would you still want them in your heritage, or would you rather add?
I don't know enough about the ill effects that you're talking about. I've done just very little research, just as in curiosity more than anything. I do know that there are limits as to where these wind farms can be mileage wise away from populated areas and things like that. I certainly would think that it would be national news. This is not the only place that wind turbines and wind farms have been implemented. They've been implemented all across the nation. And I would make the assumption that if there was some dire health concerns, and I have no professional knowledge of this, that we would probably have, the state or federal governments would have intervened, you know, at one of these other implementations of wind turbine farms.
I think if, on my end, I think most wind turbine farms are unpopulated. There is not like this area, so, you know, for most people it's not that unpopulated like you. For us, it's especially with 136 going up. With 136 wind turbines going up. Uh, with 136 wind turbines going up. There's a couple of towns here that have to send back a half a mile on them and, uh, one of them has this junior high in the forest. It's got a turbine less than a mile from the school. Now, that's too close for people that are impacted by these turbines.
Mr. Chairman, remember that, uh, we need to make sure you have a question.
I guess I was kind of leading into this too. I guess with, uh, with the HACOM setbacks, businesses might have a hard time, uh, coming to town and expanding the town, which might cut back on tax revenue, uh, which never would happen basically when you want to think of the future. And also, uh, people that are impacted by these turbines, uh, do you think even more weight would be there or from the new regulations you're saying?
I, I guess everybody has their, their own, uh, feeling as to what they would move into or away from our community, uh, you know? I guess we could say the same of, of, um, jets flying over a populated area, you know? Uh, nobody is trying to, you know, I, I don't think anybody is trying to put wind turbine farms in so people, so people move away. These are your neighbors, you know? And I think, you know, I'm not in a position, uh, to be able to forecast whether or not people are going to move in or out of a community, uh, based on whether it's wind turbine farms or some other element, um, that if they get a job somewhere else, that's more prosperous, for example.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Can you give us your name for the, for the report or record?
Andrew Robustus.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the audience? Oh, we got some back there. We'll take yours next.
Yes, sir.
John Hayes. You, uh, mentioned that, uh, you became aware of, uh, the situation with a friend?
Yes.
Or a former friend who has a business. Uh, does this friend own a farm right here?
Uh, yes, it does.
Is, uh, this friend?
But that is not lying here if you're, you mean.
No, I'm just asking you a question.
Sure.
Does your friend, will, is he considered a participant?
Define participant?
Participant would be someone who's going to have possibly turbine on their property and receive revenue from that or possibly transmission line going through their property and, and receive money for that?
He, he could. I had not actually asked him that. I, I'm assuming that that's a possibility, yes.
I, I mean, I don't want to get too personal, but I think this is kind of an important thing to us. Would you share your friend's name?
Banta Harms.
Yeah, thank you. I have some other questions. That's just one of the things I wanted to find out. Okay, um. Do you think anyone in the, uh, room here might have been offended that someone from the outside has come in and made suggestions to us to how, how we should deal with this? That we can't handle it ourselves? We have that objection?
Objection, objection. Mr. Hayes, questions of him about the financial issues that he stated in his presentation, please.
Do you speak, um, regularly or very often about, uh, to other groups about, uh, financing?
To my environment association, yes.
Have you spoken to any others about wind farms?
I have not.
All right, I think all the other questions I had have been asked by other people. I thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Brendan Snyder. Me and Mr. Johnson.
Good evening.
Um, you asked a question earlier. Are you familiar with the wind farms you currently have in Lewis County?
I've driven by some on Route 47.
Okay, so you are aware, we do have some wind farms?
Yes, but I don't know at what property values.
Okay. Are you aware that in the northwest part of the county where we have these property values at around 15%?
Jack, I assume suspects not in those.
No, he testified.
I testified to those.
He testified to them.
All right, Mr. Johnson, answer the question, please.
I am not aware of any, uh, value, devaluation of any property associated with wind, uh, farms, no, I'm not.
Okay. Are you aware that the days on the market in the northwest part of the counties, particularly the O'Neal and Spreer region, are the highest of any in this county border for realtors?
Uh, no, I am not aware of that.
Okay. We talked about funding and where if the state does reduce it, it's going to have to come from several ways and one is tax levies, correct?
No, it would be general, uh, general state aid that every school district gets based on the number of students that go to that school. Every, every school in the state of Illinois, uh, depending on the equalizer, uh, the equalizer that the state uses, uh, based on property, uh, tax, uh, that's general aid and then there's categorical aid. The tax levy is the tax levy that the community allows to be set at a certain level and if the tax levy, if the tax levy is capped out, then a referendum would have to be passed from the, from the community to increase that tax levy, uh, for more income for, for school districts.
Okay. So before we get to the state funding, what we raise in DAD, equals assessed value of our county dictates how much money you give to the state. Would you agree with that?
Yes, to a certain degree. Categorical aid is, is a little different than general, general aid that's again, many times that's based on the number of students.
Okay. Our tax base in our county is made up of, would you re-raise up a property?
And business property.
Business property.
And, and, and this is a wind farm property.
And this, and wind turbines would be resident, would be a taxable entity or would it be a tax revenue from the wind farm to the county?
That's how I, I'm not sure exactly how the, how the wind turbine, uh, feeds the money into the school district, but.
I'm not talking about the school district, I'm talking about the county.
I don't know.
So you don't know how the funding comes from this?
I, I do not, I do not.
Okay. So you, so are you aware that the, the funding comes from the wind farms to the county and is distributed as any other tax line or?
I am just wondering if that is.
Okay. So we're on the same page, yes. Okay. So if we need to raise more tax revenue for our county, we have to raise taxes for everybody that's in the county. Would that mean, would you have an agreement?
Uh, yes, but in particular, uh, jurisdiction of each school district.
And I'm not talking about the school district, I'm talking about tax revenue for the county, which indirectly is the school district.
To fund, yes, to fund the schools that's funded through your county, uh, property tax.
Okay. So we would raise residential property taxes, we could raise business taxes?
Yes.
Could we raise wind turbine taxes also?
I don't know.
So you're not, are you aware that the wind turbines have to depreciate 4% a year?
Uh, I believe I did though, I guess.
Plus inflation is added back to it?
I'm sorry?
Plus inflation is added back to 4%.
Right.
So if we need to raise more money from our county, we already know that the tax revenue from the wind turbines is going to go down every year, so we are going to be more dependent on our residential property? Would you agree with that?
Uh, yes, but that might be also affected by general state aid as well.
The general state aid doesn't pay my property taxes. I'm talking about my property taxes as a, as a residential.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Uh, property taxes are local, but, but depending on what, uh, on what kind of tax revenue you're getting from, uh, the wind turbine, uh, taxes would, uh, increase or decrease with, you know, the state, the state aid would increase or decrease for you.
Correct. So we need to raise more taxes in our county to be less dependent on state aid, correct?
Hypothetically, yes. State aid is, you know, you have, I mean, there's different taxing ages, you know, the state is one, the county is one, and your local school district is one. So in order to, uh, collect more money for schools, for example, you would have to raise the tax levy that would allow the school district to increase that portion of the county tax, okay? My main point that I'm making here is in the event that state general, general categorical, general aid goes down in the state, okay, which I believe personally is going to do, okay? Uh, that money is going to, you know, costs are not going to go down. Teacher salaries are either going to may stay stagnant for a while, but the cost of gas and the cost of electricity and some of these other things are still going to rise slightly. So we're going to have a, my, my whole point tonight is to make everybody in the room think that something is going to have to happen to, uh, even state's status quo on funding for schools in this area. Whether that be, you know, if we project a slight decrease in state funding, that money has to be made up somehow. Either that or programs are going to have to, you know, hypothetically be cut, uh, maybe teachers, uh, might have to be, a couple of teachers might have to be, uh, these are all opinions of myself, but that's, that's the only way a school administrator would be able to balance their vote.
So at the end of the day, we need to figure out how to raise more money in our county.
Maybe not today, sir, but I think in the next year, the five years out, I think we're in some, in some rocky times, yes, sir.
So the next five years, you're going to be thinking that we should take the chance on loss of property value and trade that for wind turbines so we know we're going to appreciate it in the future? Is that your opinion?
I don't have, I told, I told you at the very beginning, I am not going to take this side or this side. I, I said that very clearly at the very beginning.
Well, you're talking about funding, gentlemen.
Uh, maybe it's right. I'm an outsider. I, I don't have a hope in here. I'm just trying to say, think outside the box a little bit more than maybe what we have, we versus them attitude. Think down the road a little bit of what could happen and that, I don't know if that's going to make a difference, but please at least give some consideration that there's going to be a loss of revenue, you know, based on the nightmare that's going down in Springfield. I, I just, I don't want someone, I don't want people in here to say, to say, um, boy, we're in trouble now. So whether that's to increase the tax levy, whether that's to do something else besides wind farms, you know, that's something people guys, not me.
With all due respect, we're getting the box and we aren't concerned with how long the county situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the audience? I hear a lot of talk. If you guys have questions, come up. Right there, come up and answer questions and then talk to the audience. So, we have a hard time here.
Chairman, Mr. Hurman.
Hi, Colonel.
Welcome to the fire, Senator, to the county. It's on my mind, so I was wondering if you have done any research on the impacts of existing wind farms, um, on school budgets? I tried to do this myself and found it quite challenging, but I was wondering if you have?
I have, I have not. I, I, but in particular, I look at just this community. I am no expert in regards to other communities. I don't go around the country testifying, nothing like that.
But you did talk about our current pension debt situation, Governor Rauner's approach and so on. Would you agree that our pension debt is around roughly $111 billion?
Am I agreeing to it? Yes, ma'am.
And have you ever done math to figure out how much wind energy taxes would chip away at that?
I have not.
Um, also, are you aware of, um, this, uh, issue being discussed in Minnesota regarding the changes in the wind, in the school funding formula to sweep the wind farm revenue into the, um, general funds so that all schools?
Carolina, Minnesota, Illinois.
This is a topic. Are you aware of that?
No. Livingston County, Illinois, keep your questions on that track, please.
Are you aware of how much of that pension debt would be solved by a very small reduction in teachers' pensions if they were to agree to that? I'd say not.
I would love for the following to happen, but we haven't had a leadership in the General Assembly yet to do this. Bring everyone together, including the teachers and the, uh, and the other state workers. We know there's a crisis here. We are willing to help. Why haven't our leaders brought everybody into a room and say, what can we do to get this thing resolved to move forward so that we don't have this burden on the entire citizens right here, Illinois? And I'm sorry, lawyers on both sides. The lawyers are the only ones that are going to get rid of this thing. Let's get this thing done, bring everybody together and, and get it done. I think, I think we'll find that the teachers are willing, and even the retired teachers like myself are willing and all that.
I'm so happy to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Illinois. Anybody else have thought, yeah, thought something? Please, Dave, if?
Hi, Dave. I've met president of Livingston County, Gulfport Township, 58 years, uh, 58 years old. Address 2115 North, 2300 East Road, Pervert. The question I had, it's been kind of asked, but not quite, is we, we know we have a problem with the school funding setup, but is windmills the answer? That's what it looks like. You came down here tonight to tell us.
I don't know what's the answer, Dave. It's, it's an option. You know, I would, I would list it as an option instead of the, the holy grail, so to speak, okay? It, it's certainly an option that, uh, has conflicting views between the public. I, I can see that tonight based on the people that are in this room. To get this many people at a meeting is, is very difficult to do, but it is, it's an option that we have to consider, um, versus the other options that are out there.
You realize how windmills are funded?
Uh, by the electric company, I would assume.
It would be federal taxes.
Oh, oh, I see.
Right. Okay. That's all I had.
Any other questions from the audience? All right, let me, I just had a couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson, you said you were a teacher. Type 75?
I actually have a type 75, I'm not, I know you're the last.
Okay, CSBO?
I'm sorry?
CSBO, you have a CSBO on the watch, but no. Okay, supervisory, if?
Uh, it was a type 75, it was rated personal.
Okay.
Bring the, you know, round head.
Have you ever prepared a school budget or a letter?
I have not.
You have not? Okay, okay. Just wanted a quick question. And as you, as you did some research, did you look at any of the offsets that, that the, the proposed revenue stream would, would offset by taking away general state? Did you, are you familiar with that?
I am very little, I'm just upon it to make, to be quite honest. I definitely studied that as diligently as I probably should have, in terms of me. Uh, again, my, my purpose here was to not so much be the expert on, uh, the wind, you know, the wind turbine technology and the funding and how everything works. My concern, as I said very, very, uh, at the very beginning of my speech, was to demonstrate to the audience my concern, especially for the kids, and, and that we are caretakers of those kids. And I don't care if I'm not in the community or not, I still feel as a teacher and as a, as a human being, we have to take care of our kids. And my goal tonight was to, uh, especially mention some of the things coming down the road that may, that may or may not have been considered as by this group, that, you know, you don't, you don't wanna react to something if you want to coact, but not react to.
Okay, back to my original question, you, you have not looked at the offsets of the levy versus general state.
There's a whole lot of smarter people in this group.
Right, right, okay, I think a lot of it has to be presented to us, so. Okay, county staff, county council, any questions? Okay, Mr. Johnson, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Eight oh four, ten minutes, eight four three, we'll be rolling in. So, next Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, we're gonna be back here at this location at six thirty. All right. Looking forward to April, uh, we're gonna schedule three days in April for now. We'll talk about some more as we get further along. Uh, we're looking at April seventh, April ninth, and April thirteenth. Um, for now, we'll say six thirty and location to be announced, all right? With that, we'll go ahead and take our next witness, back up there, back up there. Your bill.
Mr. Chairman, um, I guess what I would have to do is, I have many witnesses that are coming in. I'd just like to change, I would like to have Marcus Meyer go now, if you want to put her at the end. Um, but I think Marcus, uh, we would like him to testify tonight, he's at over. And I know Carol Wildes from that town, so.
Uh, we're all strong. Carol Wildes, you're strong, because she's from the Lynn's for the evening. Okay, so just let me be clear. When I have to put you on the list, it's yours, Mr. Luke Allen.
Other than Mr. Brown, everybody is mine. They're all mine.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown is here, see you. Roger Brown. Mr. Brown, can you tell me about how long you might have?
I don't have to be very long.
Okay, here's what's gonna happen. Your, your name is on the list above Marcus Meyer, so we're gonna go ahead and take you, since yours not gonna be very long, and then we're gonna get to Marcus Meyer, so it's a rest for Mr. Luke Allen, all right? Mr. Luke Allen will go ahead and do that for, for the upper fairness, because I'm sure he talked to the rest of the people.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, please. All right, Mr. Mayor. Do you solve any testimony, you should give this case down here, it shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so have you got it? All right, please state your name and address for our recorder and we'll go ahead and take off.
Roger Brown, two four, two six, two east, welcome to North Road. I wanna thank the county board, the county board for their time, patience, and understanding and listening to all those testimonies. And, uh, I'm talking tonight, not as an expert. Uh, I'm really coming to share my farming experience with working around the turbine. Uh, I farm a farm up by Hawaii, it's west, it's a top, top crop, uh, web farm. I was farming a farm before the wind turbine came in, early in and after. And, uh, I have to say, before the, the turbine came, we had gravel road. After the turbine was constructed, we have a blacktop road. They were very good about working with us as a farm crew, uh, compensating for crop damage during the, uh, construction of it. The, uh, people were checking with us and even after construction, they go by and they saw the work and ask, was there anything that was needed, uh, the tile that, uh, when they run the transition line? They were very good about taking pictures, keeping the estimate, and repairing them. And, uh, actually, that's been a, been a good thing for us as a landowner. It has, it's not a word we're following, so it helped. And I didn't find a following on the farm that we did not know, and I had not been a farmer that long. I, uh, use GPS, I plant with guidance, I harvest with guidance. I've never lost any, uh, any signal, I did a time farming around it, and, uh, very seldom even noticed the, uh, the turbine as I planted. I serve on the app as a school board, a pre-essential school board, and know the importance of generating new money for funds, hopes, and other back and forth. And I think we heard everything that probably is, we hear about that. The only thing that I would, would share since, uh, fiscal year nineteen thousand and eleven, since they, we've lost one million seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand and one point, a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. This information comes from, uh, the, uh, the ISPE website, and then when you go there, there's FRIS, there's inquiry, and that's a section for a couple of camps. So, uh, basically, and the question was said, well, would farm compensate? No. But I do know that in, in economics, if you don't bring new money, answer the box, it's only one thing of what you can do. And that's all I'll say, because I'm not an expert on any of the, any of that. But I'm serving on the board, I know if we pass up for examples, and, uh, our school is, is very interested, our community is very interested in education, and I know they will work with it. Uh, wind farms is, is, is an option, as it was said. The, uh, and so, in small communities, and I think that we have thought about it, we ought to survive as neighbors and be together. And we're not denying anything that is said, but we gotta look. And when I was on the school board, made decisions perfectly support the importance, the note of validity, the resource of the information and the background that you're, you have. And, uh, once again, I thank you for your patience and understanding, uh, the listening of all the testimony, and that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I apologize for getting, getting a little mixed up on, on your way up here. Tell me in, uh, what, what town, you give us your address, your address, imagine the town.
Oh, Fairberry, Illinois.
Okay, Fairberry, Illinois, perfect, okay. Uh, Z, do you have any questions for Mr. Brown? All right, municipal government, school districts? All right. Uh, council on either side, also. Mr. Luke Allen.
Just a couple, Mr. Brown, are you a participant in this present?
I am.
Okay. Um, just so we're clear, it's not an advantage to wind farm, correct? That's either drawn. The wind farm you spoke about up north, that, that's not an advantage of wind farm, correct? And then one last thing, it's my understanding that the pre-essential school board has not taken a position, uh, one way or another on this wind farm, is that correct?
That is, to my understanding, they have not taken a position. I serve on the board, and on issue like this, I don't believe that you'd be right for a school board to take a position on this.
Thank you very much.
Anybody in the audience, questions? Anybody in the audience, any questions for Mr. Brown?
Good evening, Roger. Uh, just a real quick, short question, and I want to help with the answer to this question. Um, you indicated you're a participant, and I'm just wondering, um, how, what distances will be from your residence to the nearest turbine?
West and a half mile. And I, I give you a turbine, either by the way. Like, if you, the one that will be closest to me will be west and a half mile.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience, questions? County staff, county council, ZDA, thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, next, Marcus Meyer.
Myers.
Myers, Marcus Myers. All right, Mr. Myers. Do you solve any testimony, you should give this case down here, it shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so have you got it? All right, please state your name and address for the recorder and we'll take off.
Marcus Myers, forty-eighty-four, North twenty-seven, under East Road, Forest, Illinois. Uh, for the record, Mr. Myers has a PowerPoint presentation that's being handed out now to UCLC, exhibit one thirty. Well, that's what he handed out, so I have a, uh, statement to make before I start this evening, before I start the PowerPoint. No matter where we are, whether you're a lawyer, a citizen, or a judge, we should be thankful we live in a pension and we're equally in danger. We have the freedom to do so. In many places of the world, this particular type of hearing would not be possible without fear of reprisals or risk of life, or not even take place at all. I know most of us, and not all, are getting tired for the length and duration of these hearings. But kudos to the ZDA and county board for staying on task and hearing all that we should speak. We have people here from all walks of life, from government officials to farmers, to operating engineers, to professionals, to businessmen and women, and everywhere in between. And that is a great thing, we can all be together and discuss. It reminds me of the Norman Rockwell painting, of a man standing up and speaking his peace. We must never, ever take this freedom for granted. As has been said, freedom is not free. Many have paid the ultimate price, fast, present, and future. And in the end, after the lawyers and the experts in such league, after the decision has been made, we all must continue to live together in our community. I sincerely pray it can be so peacefully. You all there okay? I saw it talk too fast, just follow and do something. We're gonna talk this evening about noise analysis.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for the record, I have to object to this. I was just handed for the first time this presentation, uh, entitled, Noise Analysis of Pleasant Ridge Wind Energy Project, and licensed with equipment. There are comfort systems for Rand, we talked about earlier. There are opinions stated regarding noise issues, acoustic issues, uh, Illinois law regarding noise limits. And I look at page two, and Mr. Myers says he is not an acquisition, and he is not an attorney, and he is not an expert. And I don't, I don't see the relevance of this, nor, nor is there any combination for this person to give this type of testimony.
I think we should wait and see what his testimony is first, if you wanna go through. The fact that he's not asserting, I mean, it's a state statute. Well, he's providing this board with a state statute. He's here to testify if Mr., if he says something, or if Mr. Blazer wants to move the strike afterwards, but this gentleman's here, he's got a presentation, I think the board should hear it.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I, I, we have the presentation here, it's handed, it was, he's reporting to give all types of opinions on acoustics and law.
No, sir, listen, read the document recording, I said, right. The document, and he, and he was definitely, other documents.
And what I'm reading is he's not an acquisition, he's not an attorney, he's not an expert. So, I, I don't have a point of this.
He's not a, an expert. If there's an expert opinion you think he's giving, then Mr. Blazer can move the strike. There, Rand is mentioned one time in this entire PowerPoint with a, announced with a pinpoint to a site that has nothing to do with this. It has to do with another site, another paper that he wrote with Stephen Ambrose.
Mr. Chairman, one of the rules of this, of this board is that information provided has to be relevant. I do not see the relevance of acoustic and legal opinions from a person who, by his own admission, is neither an acquisition.
Nor a gentleman, nor an expert. Here, here, here's what's gonna happen. We're gonna start with this, and we're gonna see how it goes. We've already decided that bringing anything regarding Rand is gonna be allowed. So, Mr. Myers, I'll remind you that any reference to Rand will not be allowed. From that.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. That is any reference to Mr. Rand's report. That's, that's the ruling of the board.
That's correct. Okay, so, we'll go through it, we'll try our best to get through it, and if there's particular issues as we go, then we'll discuss them further if I can.
Thank you. So, we've all been able to read this wire right now, so you don't have an acquisition. You're not an attorney, I think it's a good one for, uh, for my listeners. But I can read, and I can write, and I can do a book, but take, and I do have an opinion, and I think I've got some comments, so. This presentation is a compilation of information from various sources. You could have read it for yourself. Second bullet point, there are studies, reviews, and letters and other information from acquisitions, including Mike Hager, Robert Rand, and General Concepts, Matt Dilling with Pleasant Ridge, and Stephen Ambrose. All of them are public domain or public sources, any place I quote there. So, you can go Google if you want to find it. Click of the walls sections, Lexington County zoning ordinance, Illinois House statute, Illinois noise regulations, again, they're all out there. You can Google it, you can find it, if you click them up, you can read it. What we're gonna talk about tonight, a home review, property line requirements are predictive noise levels. California ridge used to validate Pleasant Ridge modeling process, no safety margins. Illinois check to thirty-five section, and that, that one oh two is not addressed, and we have potential remedies. So, the big question, did the applicant need its burden of proof? That all noise limits are meant to ensure compliance with all aspects of local and state law? So, let's take a look. For the layman's point here, property line requirements, Illinois law check to thirty-five.
Judge, Mr. Chairman, relevance beyond the scope of this person's knowledge and expertise. And I just wanted to remind you, Mr. Luke has acknowledged, and I can't be argued ever here, uh, an expert certainly can rely on outside sources as an exception to the jurisprudence rule. But this person's open mission, he is not an expert in anything relevant to the issues that he's trying to discuss.
He is talking about a state statute. Whether he's not an expert, whether he's not a. Can I finish for once?
You know, yelling doesn't make it any.
You know, what you're cutting it off does not help this field anywhere, Mr. Blazer.
Yelling doesn't make you right, it just makes you louder.
Mike? John, don't get me off, doesn't advance this at all.
We're just gonna stop there, we're gonna stop there. As a matter of formal record, this is available to anyone. You may interpret it as such.
This particular section law, I don't know if it means we all understand, we're all on the same page. Section has provided also on this part of the commercial cost, allowing emission sound during nighttime hours of property line noise source located in E-Class A or C land to any receiving class A land. Excuse me, allow active A sound pressure level specified in the following table. In measure that at any point within the such receiving class A land, I don't know, the measurement of sound pressure levels shall be under less than 25 feet, touched by the line noise source. Really will concentrate on making sources from the class C land to class A land within a thousand octavene range, which in this case, few ones would want to see entirely. Illinois law check 35, classification of land for use, what is class A property? Entire property or residence is only under residence? What part of the residence is also part of the family farm uses?
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's knowledge and expertise. Continue.
Applicant needs to prove the area of property that is used solely for foreign business purposes is not used as residential. So what is the class A property? We can go look it up. It's a land based classification, it's anywhere, places, schools, medical facilities, nursing homes, hotels, museums, parks, and even correctional institutions, there are other things too, which you can figure out. So why should the property line requirement be as required, the whole resolution neutral, or the ICPD be ignored, Pleasant Ridge property? Noise level predictions for the Pleasant Ridge are land compliance, the ICPD's a car investigation, had the property line.
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's knowledge and expertise.
He's got an opinion, he's an expert.
This is an opinion, Mr. Myers can add an opinion on this, so we'll allow it, continue.
Burden of proof, it's only applicant to prove that the property is not classified as class A. California Ridge will measure the noise analysis used to validate Pleasant Ridge modeling process. Big concerns in Pleasant Ridge, the ICPD upper limits for nighttime noise levels are 41 decibels, a thousand hertz octavene. Applicant did not provide a thousand hertz, yellow band noise counters.
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's knowledge and expertise.
Did you provide?
My objection is addressed to the chairman, not to you.
No. Is it untrue?
The cross is now asking, mind enough, feed pitches, aren't you?
That's not the point of my objection, Mr. Myers, what do you want to continue?
So we have no reason to put complaints in the property lines. Forty-five residents, thirty which are nonparticipants, are predicted at the forty-one decibel. Half the residents have predicted sound amount, and predicted sound analysis results, there's absolutely no room for error. And as eleven eighteen fourteen testimony, Nathan says, this is acquisition, Haker. I was the principal acquisition consultant for the city Shirley Wood project in Brown Lake. I did all the pre-survey work there, did all the compliance measurements, including hollow frequency, and every sound measures. He's also taking full responsibility for the California Ridge. So thanks for questioning. We know there have been noise complaints at both locations, so what proof is there that we don't have for the same area in Pleasant Ridge?
I would like to, at this time, Mr. Shirley Ridge, report to the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin, in evidence, UCLC exhibit thirty-four. We have certified copy for this, so we're going to order please, from the Public Service Commission.
California Ridge property was used to validate the Pleasant Ridge modeling process. You can see in the bottom source, it's very different than Mr. Haker. See Stephen Ambrose's review, exhibit, please pass it on. Mr. Ambrose, we're moving this from Haker's disposal, compliance analysis for California Ridge.
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's knowledge and expertise, he can't authenticate anything, Mr. Ambrose did, and I just looked at another exhibit that was handed out, which is a letter from Mr. Ambrose, so that we. Mr. Ambrose, this is far as we know, is not to be testifying in this proceeding.
Alright, neither of these speaks specifically to the Pleasant Ridge Wind Project, so, on the same basis that we accepted your motion earlier, we have to deny your objection at this point. Continue, Mr. Myers.
It was an analysis of Mr. Haker's disposal with compliance analysis for California Ridge, measure which were made without an observer, which contradicts ICPD rules. Measures were made during mandatory operational containment, so that would. Measures were made without an observer, which contradicts ICPD laws.
Mr. Chairman, this, this letter evidently is a criticism of the study that was done at California Ridge, and this witness just confirmed a little bit ago, as Mr. Haker had assigned months ago. The results from California Ridge were used, in fact, to validate the model that was run for Pleasant Ridge, so it does relate to this project. And this person has no expertise to testify about this, Mr. Ambrose will not be testifying in this proceeding, completely inappropriate.
After you've ended the hearing, it's moving. We'll take your objection under advisement with regard to this particular exhibit, and we'll allow Mr. Myers to continue.
Measures were made during mandatory operational containment, or whatever's in place. So what about California Ridge? Applicant refuse to provide proof that nearby turbits tested the California Ridge property.
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's expertise, he has no knowledge of what occurred at California Ridge, or how it was revealed. This is pure speculation.
He's sending the Ambrose report.
This is the Ambrose report.
And he has no basis for citing an Ambrose letter that's on the report. Mr. Ambrose will not be testifying in this proceeding.
To that statement that first called it, is there any, this is the applicant, is there, is there truth to the statement? Which states applicant refused to provide proof nearby turbits tested at California Ridge operating near full electric power plant. Did you, did you refuse to provide proof?
Absolutely not. Nor is there any evidence of that in this proceeding. So, at this point, you're asking me a question that's not even part of the record of this case, and that's part of the problem with even looking at this letter from some person named Ambrose, who we know is going to be testifying in this proceeding. And this gentleman, who, I'm sure he has the best models of art, cannot authenticate this document or any of the statements in this document. And again, the California Ridge studies, Mr. Haker testified, as this gentleman confirmed, was used to validate the results of Pleasant Ridge. So this relates directly to the results at Pleasant Ridge.
It relates directly to California Ridge, and.
I'm glad that Mr. Myers has the best intentions, it heart begins to be something, that is.
That's. This is completely inappropriate, Mr. Chairman.
You've already said you're gonna take it under advisement, that's about finished, you move on.
Alright, Mr. Myers, why don't you keep, continue moving, and we'll, we're gonna try your resubstantiation.
Thank you. Turbines can split at full RPM without the lower power off, noise is a function of the power off. Marking is real volatile, the laser gun. On the third bullet point, there is sort of like, yeah, twenty-five thousand watt heat surge in the generator. You can run it at full RPM, but until you actually come over it, the noise is going to change. So we're practically the same point, I know what that sounds like. Stephen Ambrose has referred that Haker's California Ridge analysis, this report is not credible, is not complied by ICPD rules, does not mean the intent to prove, prove noise level compliance. California Ridge noise level compliance analysis should be not, should not be used to validate Pleasant Ridge.
Objection, Mr. Chairman, same opinion. Now we're directly looking at validation of the Pleasant Ridge study. By someone who will not testify in this proceeding, and is trying to get it in through someone who has no basis whatsoever to testify about this subject.
Again, we'll take that under advisement, if you can continue, Mr. Myers.
Revere ten other operating wind turbines, according to acquisition, did you, Mr. Ambrose, who are operating, actually noise measured, operating wind turbines have a six to seven TPA higher than predicted?
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's expertise, now he's trying to introduce, as a non-expert, alleged readings from ten other projects that he's never been involved in, and has no basis for testifying about. Now we're gonna go through, slide that this person prepared.
No, you have a source. If you look to the bottom, you see we have a source.
Oh, absolutely.
Where this comes from.
And as we've all done, he's not an expert, he can't testify about hearsay from other experts, alleged experts.
You will find that this is the exact same information that you've been receiving from Rob this year.
Alright, this particular objection, we're gonna accept the exact objection. Let's move on past, past slide fifteen, past slide sixteen, um, if seventeen interprets that, we're gonna need to move on past it as well. Oh, I'm sorry, my numbers are different, so seventeen, let's move on past seventeen. Okay, does anyone like to start if you're comfortable there?
Some of the lack of safety margins. International standard AC sixty-one four hundred, episode eleven.
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's knowledge and expertise, he has, he has no knowledge of what the requirements may be of this acoustic standard, or how they're applied in this procedure.
He should have the right to place into evidence what the acoustic standards are. If they wanted to show that they don't find, they absolutely have that right, but this is a public, published standards. And what they should have done was an acquisition was willing to.
If you wouldn't scare him off, who would?
I suppose that's based volumes, but they're willing this to be sworn in the road, but in any event.
This, alright, Mr. Blazer, Mr. Blazer, this, this is available to any member of the community, in, in, anyone. He simply is just pointing out, so, if, Mr. Chairman, if he's reading from it, I don't see the relevance, but that's fine, but if he's reporting the state opinion based on what he thinks it says, that's not fun.
Don't you wait till he states an opinion before you make the objection, because he hasn't stated.
Mr. Myers, continue.
Uncertainty in measure results shall be stated, this directly from this member. So what are some miscellaneous type of uncertainties, components that can be?
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's knowledge and expertise. Now he's reporting to give numbers of readings, decimal levels, and he has absolutely no basis for testifying about it.
That are ending, the international standard we just set, was he could be.
He has no basis for testifying for any of this. Or how to find it, Mr. Myers, continue.
Could I get some of the possible calibration to change the instruments together, to the microphone mounting board, distance to the microphone to the hub, beams in the air, as well as turbulence? If you just add those first six columns, I'll give you the yellow column, you get a one point three decibel, and that's a lack of safety margin, just an instrument issue.
Objection, that's his opinion regarding lack of safety margin.
Please continue, Mr. Myers.
Uncertainty in design calculations is the norm of engineering practices.
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's expertise and knowledge, he's not an engineer, he couldn't possibly testify to what the norm is in engineering practice.
I believe it's hard to get the source, continue.
For, for the record, or, supplying, for the record, if you're.
It's UCA exhibit one thirty-two, which is the source of the Golden Science Technology Society. Plus minus four TV is really hold it.
It's what I, I think we need to do something now. Okay, so, the, the exhibit is one thirty-two, slide was at one twenty-two, so we need to make sure we know that in the submission of the slide, it needs to be changed, the source, UCLC exhibit one thirty-two.
Okay, go ahead. If I may, Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'm looking at exhibit one thirty-two, it's not a standard, it's a study by an individual named John P. Harrison. And as far as my knowledge, Mr. Harrison will also not be testifying in this proceeding. This isn't a standard, it's a study. Published in a bulletin. This is not an international libel, it's someone's opinion.
We'll consider the weight of this evidence, exhibit one thirty-two, in our decision, and we'll allow it, at this point, Mr. Myers, continue.
Plus minus four TV is really should be tolerated in noise prediction calculation. Plus minus four TV is real, and should be tolerated in noise prediction calculation. But a way to deliver a superior in the style of Austin, to protect their very large investments, and testing for compliance, that is becoming more. I'd like to read from the bulletin that you had in front of you, page fifty-eight, second column, marks a bigger way down, under efficiencies with present in relation.
Mr. Chairman, just so I don't have to keep doing this, and I have a standing objection to this person reading from this bulletin, of this person who will not testify in this proceeding.
No objection.
Alright, we'll take your standing objection under review, uh, for further consideration later, and you need to, you need to help, or I'll, because you're, you are fast, and you're going quiet, we need to speak louder.
So ready for page two fifty-eight, in the Gulf of South, Science Technology and Science, second column. Also noted of a standard algorithm predicting noise at a receptor is ISO dash ninety-six thirteen dash two. But, this was never designed for true noise. The I S seven being a specific, meaning it's used to noise sources close to the ground, such as a road... Traffic, road rail traffic, industrial noise sources, construction activities, many underground based noise sources. Turbine noise derives from blades rotating typically between thirty-five to one hundred and twenty-five meters, around... And use without compliance as stated in the results of predictions at a little... No safety margin was included for the application, no safety margin was included. Prediction of the use by the applicant, I S seven ninety-six thirteen dash two, has a plus minus three decimal certainly, up to one thousand meters. I think the count has transferred this to the law. This plus minus two D P A's decimal certainly becomes greater than the sound sources above thirty meters. Again, refer to the source. Turned out by closer ridge is eighty meters. Manufacturers batches certainly can be up to two decimal. See the source? What about this between turbines for downward across the turbines? Should there be a safety margin for turbines for dead air? Again, referring to page two fifty-eight, bottom of the second column. Turbines leave behind a turbulent wake and a bracing vessel. Turbines is known to exasperate turbine noise. Turbine occurs naturally in the atmosphere, the weight of turbines, and this natural...
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's knowledge and expertise. At this point, he's already been reading the reference data, he's saying...
He's reading from the same report that he's already seen before.
Change objection to the... Of the Volta Science Technology Society.
Mr. Blader, I believe you already have a standing objection.
I do already realize that, but that's where the jury comes in, Mr. Chairman.
I'll be giving you the last sentence, turbines occurs naturally in the atmosphere, the weight of turbines, this natural turbulence of the five, that you got in there.
Did you try to lower your microphone?
How's that? Shouldn't tell me. Finally, after all these factors are taken into account, it would not make sense to put at least one to two decimal margin to ensure compliance on the project as well. Appears that Volta's facility design margin was included.
Objection, relevance to disappear, beyond the scope of this witness's knowledge and expertise as to what appears.
I did appear, it's not there.
Objection, Mr. Meyer.
You know what? Wait a second. He is saying the exact same thing that Mr. Hanker, he's just commenting on exactly the testimony of Mr. Hanker, which is... Not including his design margin. Let me finish, please, once tonight, Mike, before you cut me off. That's a direct quote from Mr. Hanker.
Are you done with that?
Yep.
Okay. This person has stated his opinion as to whether that facility design margin was excluded, was included or excluded. He says it appeared, it's on slide twenty-four. That's an opinion, he has no basis for stating his opinion. Is it wrong?
Quote from Mr. Hanker.
It's, it's not affirmative anywhere on this document. Now, we all know, we all sit here and listen, move to strike. This, this particular issue, if you can find the source, cite the source, we'll allow it, otherwise... It's hearsay. So, uh, you're welcome to cite the source on that, and we'll accept that, otherwise we'll, we'll rule in favor of his objection.
I don't have the source, because I don't have...
Alright, and we can take that until later time as well.
Which issue were you talking about?
Statement that appears that no facility design margin was included.
Four of the safety margins for the I S seven ninety-six thirteen dash two, manufacturers batches certainly, certainly, and facility design margin. But the increase in only one decimal gave a lack of nighttime safety margin. Forty-five residents, thirty-eight, non-participants, noise measurements could be over the I P C P limits, resulting in a violation.
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's knowledge and expertise. He's stating his opinion as to, he, we'll slide the slide back so we can see what he's objecting to. He's purporting to state his opinion regarding compliance with nine point noise limits. He has no qualification to do that. Move to strike.
It's, it's simple math.
I know it's simple math.
And you want, it's simple math, that one decimal plus forty-five decimals is forty-six. We've all heard that forty-five is limited from his experts.
Alright, we'll get into, uh, Mr. Blader. Mr. Blader, yes, sir. Mr. Meyer is asserting an opinion, we're gonna allow it.
I'll read chapter thirty-five, section nine hundred, dot one oh two, is not addressed. Application is not addressed, chapter thirty-five, section nine hundred, dot one oh two, zoning board to assess permit to support enjoyment of life.
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's knowledge and expertise.
He can read the report. In nine hundred point one oh two, if that is where the report, Mr. Hanker tested.
That's right, he has no basis for reporting it to generate interpretation as to a misregulation or evidence.
He hasn't given interpretation, he's just said so far. He said so far. Can I finish?
Application, press check of thirty-five, section nine hundred, dot one oh two.
Mr. Chairman, can I please get an instruction that I at least be able to finish my sentences around here, and I have to finish one?
I'm ready to go home. I guess I'll have to start bullying you guys to kind of get it together. We're trying to get through this, this is a member of the public, he's asserted that he's not an expert, please, let's, let's pass through this, Mr. Chairman. Now, the one thing that he has under the line here, that's important to us, the zoning board appeals, that's a condition that we will get enjoyment of life, enjoyment of property. So keep that something in the same as you're trying to say.
I'd like to read the last paragraph on the page. No person shall cause or violate emission of sound beyond the boundaries of this property. This property is defined in section twenty-five of the Illinois Environmental Protection Act, so as to cause noise pollution in Illinois, or so as to violate any provision of this chapter. License pollution defines an emission of sound that unreasonably interferes with the enjoyment of life or any amount of business or activity. In Illinois case law supports that this project must comply with regulations which prohibits noise pollution in Illinois, for yourself.
Mr. Chairman, now he's purporting to give you an opinion about what Illinois case law provides. I recognize that this is an effort to get around that, Mr. Ranger's board is not in record, nonetheless, this is not a person qualified to issue this kind of opinion.
He is qualified to say what the case sets. The board may disagree, Mr. Blader may disagree, whether, we will be arguing these things very much, very later, but this gentleman can at least say what his opinion is, his personal.
Would you agree to the last slide, the particular objection to that? Case law. I will ask Mr. Meyer not to assert an opinion based upon this case law, this particular case law is issued. You're neither an attorney or, all those things that you already said you weren't. So, okay, move on.
Since the application would not prove compliance, and it did reference to chapter twenty-five, section nine hundred, dot one oh two, means me to believe that there is no concern in enjoyment of life. This is application, evidently violating Louis County zoning board, section forty-nine nation forty-four, Volta Corfere, Louis County comprehensive plan, Illinois law, E C D, chapter thirty-five, section nine hundred, dot one oh two. So potential remedies. No more of noise trailing edge delays. L N T blades have not been proven to be assured only for noise issues.
Objection to that opinion. There's no basis for reporting it's a wrong call. Mr. Blader, stand up, Mr. Blader.
The applicant's closer range of energy of project sound studied by Stan Tech data, you can see the differences over between the L N T blades and standing blades, one point seven to the one oh year, and one point four to the one oh three. That's generally in there. Application should be required to show the induction in decibels via comparison documentation between measured levels...
I'm sorry, I just misunderstood you. Can you back up to the application being required to...
Should be. Application should be required to show the induction in decibels via comparison documentation between measured levels using L N T and measured levels using standing blades on all white turbines. Turbines are at a prominent power output, developing manufacturers' predictions. I believe that the initial application, I think I read the report, L N T blade turbines designated. A little bit later, we saw our twelve L N T blades turbines designated. The document dated one twenty-one fifteen, I believe it's, plus difference exhibit sixteen A, around twenty-one oh threes and twenty-four one hundreds. What's next? Though there's documentation, application should render stringent application to mitigate exceedance levels, exceedance levels, if the wood form is approved. Once built, shutting out turbines is the only reliable alternative to mitigate. Is it the potential increase in decibels due to lack of safety margins far greater than the invalidated potential decrease in decibels resulting from the use of L N T blades? Increased distance and setbacks, for sure compliance with the resolution law prior to permitting. Noise levels six could be higher than the application, with required setbacks could double to comply with the law.
Objection, relevance beyond the scope of this person's knowledge and expertise, he's referencing some outside records by someone named John Herro. He has no knowledge or expertise, it's not relevant. Okay, this is clearly an opinion.
Absolutely, and I did find that he's looking for, I read it.
Every college student knows this formula.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, this... This is a very specific acoustical formula. Your practice of, of not being acoustician, I guess would, would disallow this person's statement, so, uh, we'll, we'll allow Mr. Blader's objection in that regard, if you can just move on.
Conclusions. Looking at noise limits, there are many areas where the applicant has not met its vertical proof, and then asserting compliance with the law. Noise level predictions, for closer ridge, are not in compliance with the I P C P requirements to measure at the proper line. This is a breach of law. Application... Appears to have failed certain information that is a high vulnerability to prove non-compliance within the law.
Objection, relevance beyond the scope.
With the increase of only one, Mr. Chairman.
There again, Mr. Meyer, that this, Mr. Blader, this is Mr. Meyer's opinion, he's allowed to have that, so we'll allow that.
With the increase of only one in the decibels due to the lack of nighttime safety margin, forty-five residents, residences, noise measurements over the I P C P limit, resulting in violation of the law.
Just for record, I know this is a review, Mr. Chairman, just for record, I'll check again, I'll see.
This application would have no believing violation, Louis County zoning board instruction of the nine hundred forty-four Volta Corfere, Louis County comprehensive plan, in the Illinois law. I P C P, chapter thirty-five, section nine hundred, dot one oh two, enjoyment of life. So the only sure remedy is to increase the distance and setbacks, so sure compliance with the noise limits in the law prior to permitting.
Objection, Mr. Chairman, this is the same statement that you made on slide thirty-six, that you already sustained an objection.
I don't think this was objected to in slide thirty-six.
Yes, it was.
You objected to slide thirty-five.
I objected to his opinion of averting setbacks.
Slide thirty-six.
So, to correct that, we objected to his use of the reference data, so... We allowed your objection on thirty-six, but we're gonna allow you to continue in slide forty-two.
The United Citizens of Louis County respectfully ask the Z D A and the county board to vote no, if this section is proven, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Sorry to have to go through that so slowly, yet, Z D A, we have any questions at this point from Mr. Meyer? Okay. Units of Volta Government School Districts. Mr. Luque, yes? Mr. Blader? I think I've made my point, Mr. Chairman, no question. Alright. Members of the audience.
Embryr of Congress. I had a question, whether this is directed for objections, first of all, but, it's not. Okay. Do you think, in your opinion, uh, well, first of all, this information is available to the public to read, and can we have access to this?
Do you consider any exhibits for U C L C?
I can't, I can't, I'm very bold, you guys. Okay, time out, time out.
He's asking whether this is going to be available for public consumption?
Yes, yes, it's believed, there may be parts that we have to... Take out, it probably all posted, there may be some particulars that we have to, uh, excerpt from, from that, but yes. Answer that question.
Okay, and you feel... Okay, and you feel that all this information gives, for, for most of us, is pretty serious? I guess, do you feel, because of all these objections, of energy station series too? And you feel that maybe they will want this out?
Objection. All right, Mr. Meyer. New question.
I guess, that ended my question.
Anybody else from the audience with questions?
Mr. Mowall. I would like to know if you think that you have a right to have your own opinion on this subject?
Absolutely, it's still living in the United States of America.
All right, anybody else from the audience with questions? Anybody else? Come, yeah, come and tell us. Emerson, ZDA. Mr. Meyer, thank you. All right. I've got a quarter after nine, and I've got a list with several names to want. I'm gonna read off a few names, and if you have about ten minutes worth of comments, or soul reader, hand them and ditch up there.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Kerber I know is on the list, and she has about three minutes, and I know she's having, she's having a sitter for the kids, and I would just like to give her.
Three minutes is perfect. Ms. Kerber. Come on down. All right, ditch one. Did you solve this word, if that's the one you should give in this case, now I'm hearing it should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, please state your name and address, and record recorder, and go ahead.
I'm Mark Kerber, K-E-R-B-E-R. I live at 25615 East 1100 North Road, in the forest, Illinois. I live in Pleasant Ridge, Kentucky. Our homestead is settled on four acres. I reside with my husband Chris and our three young children. My husband is a farmer, but we do not farm any of the lands surrounding our house. We also do not own any land that isn't as opposed to footprint. We have one landlord who lives out of state, is a person's man. I can promise you that his money will not be supporting the local economy, nor will he ever lay eyes on these wooden towers. Why is it so important to me? The house that my husband and I reside in is my childhood home. I was raised in this house, and I am proud to raise my children again. It saddens me that something that I honor and hold so dear is of, sorry, is of no consequence to those who stand to make the profits from this project. Furthermore, I have lived in my house for 32 years, minus the time I stayed in college. I have been a resident of this community, of this county for 32 years. Not one single time, before or during this project, has one member of local government or a single county board member ever asked my opinion. I have only the impression that I was being represented. I for board members say that they've been out about speaking with the people. Who? I have had the same address for 32 years. Shouldn't you be talking to the people whom this affects the most? The people who don't stand in that country proposed one farm? I have found towers surrounding my house, I do not want them. I truly do like and appreciate my neighbors, even those who have signed up for my towers. However, I would also like to think that this has been truly a open and fully disclosed project from the beginning, and my neighbors knew how I felt. They would have taken that into some consideration of common courtesy, as they were given the luxury of making a decision that affects the happiness of my family. Also, seven years ago, when this project was introduced, and I use termlessly, I was seven years younger. I had not remotely had the care that I have now for the responsibility. I can tell you that I didn't care for them seven years ago, when they were going up elsewhere. And had I known what this was going to turn into today, I absolutely would have been one. I was truly unaware of the proposed one project and the ramifications that it would have. This summer, I was taking my kids for a walk down a very quiet country road, as we often do. I was sad, and when I went to picture my daughter, and I realized this could all be coming to my knees. We have also received a neighbor's contract from Inc. Energy in regards to the project. I can assure you that it makes good kindling, but I couldn't find any other use for it, nor was I willing to waste any time. I beg all of you to consider the fact that whether those of us in opposition are the majority to my party, we have the most to lose from the proposed project, and should therefore be considered as your utmost priority. This shouldn't come down to the issue of money and politics. I think history speaks for itself on that. Thank you.
ZDA, do you have any questions? Local government's school districts. One of these days, we're gonna get somebody in that category. Anthony S. Mr. Blader?
Just a couple of quick ones.
All right.
Mr. Kerber, I can't think of what's the mark, it's supposed to be 334. Do you recognize it as an aerial photo of your, of your property or residence area?
Yes.
Okay, could you, your house is the one with, that looks to be the brown roof on the west side, or toward the west of the property, is that clear?
Correct.
What's the building on the north?
That is the machine shed.
And what's the building on the east?
The farm.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Luke? Members of the audience, any questions out there? Any questions? Any questions? If we don't, come and stand. ZDA. Thank you. 9:22. We're gonna get out of here early tonight. All right, I'm gonna remind everybody that next Wednesday, immediately, 6:30 here, Walton Center. It's gonna be your final opportunity to sign off. I can't tell you that amount. If you miss your opportunity, you miss your opportunity of announcing it. We have dates, April 7, April 9, and April 13. We're gonna do 6:30 for times, but we don't know what date you can. All right. You need a motion to reset. This is a motion to reset. Keep for seconds, then a motion, all the paper.